During our regular meeting of the Camden County Board of Commissioners, join us for the invocation given by Mr. Goodman and join us for prayer.
Let's stand please and gentlemen and move your covers please and let us bow. Our Father and our God in heaven, we come to be grateful for air tonight. We're so thankful for all of the blessings, the things that you give us, the values of this earth. We're grateful for the people in this earth too, those who protect us and serve us in uniform. We pray special protective blessings on them in these prime times. Father, we humble ourselves and ask of your guidance and your wisdom and lead us to correct decisions and help us to do the things which are pleasing and best. All of these things we ask of thy most holy name.
Amen.
Thank you very much. I believe I have to say, Son of America, unto your product which is saved, one nation under God, in this long, good day, Jesus.
Roll call, Speaker.
All Commissioners are present?
I got a little statement I'm going to read for tonight. I know there's concerns about this proposed amendment, the agenda setting rules this evening. The recent past, there were no rules, written rules for setting the agenda, and I felt that that was wrong. And last year, I proposed that we have one in writing and have it approved by the board, and that happened last year. Now, in an effort to be more professional and enhance collaboration among the board members, this change was proposed. It is no different than what happens on the state or federal government levels when a bill is required to have cosponsors. As far as the rules for public comments and behavior, these are designed to foster an orderly flow to the meeting. We have just now started attaching these rules to our agenda, though some people might not even know they exist. We allow two public comment periods during our meeting. First is limited to agenda items only, and the last is open for any comments you have. We limit these to three minutes per speaker. These comment periods are not and have never intended to be a period of discussion between the Board of Commissioners and the public. Other counties allow only one public comment section, and that's usually at the end of their meeting, and it's sometimes it's limited to only 20 minutes, so not everybody gets to speak. So with that said, are there any amendments to the agenda? Here are none. Can I get an adoption, a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We got first and second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor? Those opposed? All right, it brings us to the approval of minutes. If there are no changes to the both of the January 16th special call meeting, can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to approve minutes as presented, Chairman.
Second.
Got first and second to accept the minutes from the January 16th call meeting. All is in favor? That brings us to the first comment period of the night. We got anybody registered? This is for agenda items only.
Yes, we do. First up is Kelly Softlet.
For Co., St. Mary's. Commissioners, regarding item seven on the agenda, the proposed amendment to the Camden County Agenda Setting Policy requiring a Commissioner to have a cosponsor to place an item on the agenda needs to be rejected. Each Commissioner needs to be a representative of his constituency. If the citizen, if a citizen has an issue, his or her Commissioner needs to be able to represent their issues to the board. All citizens of Camden County need to have their voice heard. Please do not approve this resolution.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Next, we have Tom Softlet.
Tom Softlet, eighty-four, Oyster Cove, St. Mary's. I'm against approval of agenda item number seven, requiring any Commissioner requesting an agenda item must have a cosponsorship from another Commissioner before making the request. Requiring two Commissioners to approve agenda items could and probably will keep a Commissioner from presenting issues important to his district and have the effect of silencing his constituency. I am amending, I'm against amending the rules to require two Commissioners approval before adding agenda items.
Thank you.
Next is Stephen Barling.
Stephen Barling, Kingsland, Georgia. I've lived in Camden County since 1987, and I'm an avid boater, and I looked with interest when I saw that the county is in the process of perhaps buying land on Honey Creek for a boat ramp in the northern part of the county. And I'm much in favor of that. I, part of my background is twenty-six years in the submarine service, so I'm into safety and details type of things. And I, so when I saw this, the boat ramp that I use most of the time is Temple Creek up in Brown Town, and that has been in disrepair. And I noted with pleasure last year where it said that DNR had a leash now, and they were going to have the responsibility for the maintenance and stuff and inspections of the ramp and the dock. So I thought, wow, this is going to get fixed. And I found out, as I know from being in the Navy, the government moves slowly, and that was told that it might happen in the summer of 2024. And a caveat, they said if nothing gets in its way, in other words, a hurricane comes along and takes all the money or something like that, and I understand that. So when I heard about the Honey Creek, I wanted to see what was going on, who was doing what to who. And I got some good answers out of the county, and I think that they have a plan where the DNR is going to build the thing and then the life cycle support, part of it at least will go into the county. And I am in favor of that because I think having boating ramps is a boon to the county for tourism and also for the people that live here. And I've gotten straight answers from most, both DNR and everything. The last thing I want to say is, interesting enough, two different entities in DNR own those ramps. The one in Temple Creek is owned by Mr. Bishop, and the other one's owned by the Coastal down here and things. That just shows how you're dealing with two separate bodies. I appreciate your time and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hey, Todd Klein, Capital Point Drive, Wado, Georgia. Chairman Casey, thanks for the opportunity. Learned I could come here and speak, and I hope the Commission does pursue favorably the Honey Creek boat ramp opportunity with the state. A wife and I and family have lived in Camden County for over 20 years. My mother now lives here. We love beautiful Camden County, especially the North End. There's a lot of folks that drive north into Glen County to go fishing, to access the water, have another access here in Camden County, do nothing but benefit the residents especially, but also bring people here. I have a 10-year-old, and every opportunity that I have to get him out from behind a computer screen and outdoors is a good thing. So having good local access is very important, and thank you. I hope you consider it favorably as you explore the idea of working with the state on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody Smith, six fifty-one, Powderhorn Road. As you're developing the policy to set agenda items, as well intentioned as it is, I believe the cosponsorship requirement disenfranchises citizens by creating an opportunity to silence the concerns of those a Commissioner may represent while also shielding others from voting on potentially uncomfortable subjects and being put on the record. This safeguard could limit transparency and accountability, hindering the public's ability to assess their representative's position on crucial matters. Striking a balance between policy and open discourse is crucial to ensure our principles are upheld. So I would ask that you reconsider that portion of the new agenda setting policy.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. The recent proposal to require two Commissioners to agree on agenda item number seven is wrong. It's an attempt to circumvent ideas or proposals brought forward by a single district Commissioner that represents his or her district. All may not agree with an item, but all voices should be heard when conducting the business of the people in Camden County. I understand a code of conduct is necessary in today's world, but it is not necessary or fair to remove any one citizen's voice or any one Commissioner's voice from Camden County. Under the freedom of speech, it's recognized as it's a human right. Under Article nineteen of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the right to freedom of speech allows individuals to express themselves without government interference or regulation. This is an attempt at interference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey McGraw.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Corey McGraw, and I'm owner of one fifty-five Cedar Lodge Lane. I own Cedar Lodge on Honey Creek, and my husband owns Cedar Bluff LLC, as well as we own a private residence at two fifty-five Cedar Lodge Lane. I have previously sent an email to you all to kind of pinpoint our concerns with the Honey Creek boat ramp on behalf of myself, the Rawls, and Mr. Osick. I will not reiterate those tonight. I do not want to waste your time. I have asked that the county add those into the minutes. So I, there are a few items that I wanted to just quickly bring to your attention that have come to my attention since I had last communicated with you all. First, I want to reiterate that curve issue that we have brought to your attention. It's an issue whether or not this boat ramp goes through with the proposed, with Bridge Point becoming developed at some point once building permits can be issued, there's going to be an issue with trailers crossing across Episcopal Church Road with that curve right there at Dover Bluff and Episcopal Church Road. So that's definitely an issue. Further, there's a case that has recently been brought down by the Supreme Court of State of Georgia. It is Sumter v. Morris. I think it creates an argument as to whether or not the county has accepted the dedication of the portion of the road that the proposed boat ramp is being put on. So Episcopal Church Road is paved all the way up to a couple feet past the drive for Cedar Lodge on Honey Creek. After that, it becomes gravel and is not maintained by the county, nor is the sliver that goes all the way to the river, which is adjacent to Mr. McGraw's property. So I think that that is an issue that needs to be explored. I did not have the time to do the extensive research that would need to be done with regards to that, but I do think that that is an issue. Further, if you look at the deed that was prepared to the county from, from, let's see, from the power company that originally dedicated that property to the county, I believe there's a use issue as well. It states that that property is specifically to be used for a right-of-way, for a roadway. It does not state that that property is to be used for a boat ramp. So I think those are issues that the Commissioner, legal issues that could implement legal percussion later that need to be taken into consideration before they spend $50,000 of taxpayers' money. That is not refundable once this option contract is entered into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rick Manning from Bullhead. First thing I want to say about the Honey Creek situation, I'm all for all kinds of recreation in this county, but who's going to benefit most out of that? We all know it's the Episcopal Center. They are chomping at the bit for us to spend money to help their deteriorating waterfront property they got there. It's all gone to you-know-what, and they're chomping at it. Why have we not even asked if they could not donate that acre instead of giving them 125 grand for it? These questions, I mean, let's negotiate things here, folks, and then move forward, and you better look at the legal issues. Enough about Honey Creek. Anyways, I totally am strongly against requiring that a Commissioner, to have a backup Commissioner before he can place anything on that agenda to be discussed in front of the public. It's not a bill. You can say it's a bill, it's not a bill. It's a discussion to be put forth so we know how each of the five of you feel about any item that concerns whichever Commissioner puts it up there's constituents. Every one of y'all was voted in by a fifth of the county. Each one of y'all represent a fifth of that, but in the long run, you represent everybody in this county, every citizen. Y'all make decisions for it. But here you are trying to cut off the voices. This is not, by no way, going by what our founders found this whole country on. You're not dictators. We cannot rule over what the people want. I mean, we've got enough trouble already, folks, with not listening to the people here in this county, and here we go again. I mean, you're not even setting good rules to go by here. You want to, you want to require us to have rules and somebody that you don't like to have rules, but you're not even going by your own rules. I've got plenty of them right here for you. You still ain't, Open Records Act still ain't been given out. I've got one right here that I put in a year ago. I still have gotten, have not gotten answers. Section eight ten, you still, I've been waiting seven weeks now, still don't have a reply from my email. What's going on here, folks? It's passing the buck. One guy tells me it's code enforcement. Well, who works code enforcement? Y'all in charge of everybody. I mean, come on, if we're going to do something, let's start with holding our own selves accountable up there, then we can start holding other people accountable. Thank you.
My name is Ben Goff. I live at Haritz Bluff in Cameron County. And I have a change in dealing with agenda item regarding LMIG for this year. In reviewing the supporting roads report, I would disagree with the condition showing for Pelican Road, Pelican Circle, and the easterly end of Haritz Bluff Road. I have no idea where those assessments came from. In considering these types of road preservation, there's a need to consider the conditions and to take the necessary steps prior to work being done, such as hot patch, crack sealing, and pothole repair, that as such was not done in Haritz Bluff Village Project. I don't know about every other place, but not there. The process was not followed. The project proposal for Haritz Bluff was never completed properly. Material was not applied according to recommended specifications, resulting in alligatoring and premature cracking, as shown in the attachments that will go in the minutes. Temporary striping was not done in a timely manner nor properly, resulting in the majority of the center line yellow striping, giving the appearance of a kindergarten finger painting exercise, but then instead of relatively straight lines, crooked meandering and averaging six to seven inches in width, some areas seven to nine inches, instead of the five inches that were pointed out in the contract. I have doubts that sufficient knowledgeable monitoring of the performance of the contractor was accomplished. It ain't finished. It ain't of sufficient contractual performance, and it ain't pretty nor durable. As I was told it was inspected, and I saw that wasn't sufficient. Look at it now, three months later, and we have cracks all over that new preservation. We have one individual assigned to perform the public works director job, do the county engineering, do right-of-way coordination, and supervise the motor pool. How can they monitor or supervise any contractor that we've hired paying $150,000 per mile? And there's nobody out there monitoring what that contractor's doing? And I can assure you, it was never finished at Haritz Bluff. Prove it if you think so. Seems more important to get one of these jobs assigned to the new position higher communications director instead of what's proposed would be beneficial. Lack of foresight.
Thank you.
Nita Adasher, Haritz Bluff. I have to question why the members of this council believes that two members have to agree on an agenda item in order for it to come before the public. Is it that you're trying to hush one particular member of this board? When did we become so dictatorial that everyone cannot express their own opinions? Shouldn't everyone, including the public, be able to speak freely about what's happening in our county?
Thank you.
Steve Winkle, Haritz Bluff. I did not come here tonight to get arrested, but I do have eight items on the agenda that I wish to speak about, and I beg the Commissioner's tolerance to allow me one minute per item.
You're allowed three minutes only.
I intend to follow the example of Supreme Court decisions that say that you have to give me the opportunity to speak about items of general concern to the public. And I'm giving you a forewarning about the fact that I intend to pursue that. Item number one is a question. On your rule about items to appear on the agenda, do you mean anything that's on these sheets of paper labeled agenda at the top of the page? Or do you mean agenda items on what you call the regular agenda? It's not clear. Your rule is not even clear enough for someone to understand, a common person like we are here in this room, to understand what you mean. I agree that on agenda item number one, I agree that we should have the Honey Creek boat ramp if it meets all legal requirements. On number two, I have a very big question. Why are we paying $150,000 for one acre of land when acreage on the other side of the street is appraised at about $5,000 an acre? And the Episcopal property is appraised at only $1,500 an acre on county tax records? Now, I realize that the Episcopal Church does not pay any taxes, but state law requires, the Board of Equazation requires, I'm sorry, not the Board of Equazation, the, the law requires that we all have our properties appraised the same. And at that intersection of that road where the boat ramp is intended, there's evidence that the county is not living up to its obligations. I have more than 1,000 lots I can document. This is putting you on notice that I intend to enforce my First Amendment rights.
Time's up, sir.
On item number three.
Turn to Speaker O'Neal, please. Your time is up, sir. We're asking you to sit down. Your time is up. Your time is up, Steve. Please sit down. No, I'm not, sir.
You're making rules that are in violation of the First Amendment of the United States of America.
Steve, your time is up, sir.
Only based on your arbitrary law.
They're not arbitrary. Can you please escort him out of the building, please?
... the federal constitution are you operating in?
All right, next speaker, please.
Karen Rawl.
Sharon Rawl.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Rawl, and I appreciate the opportunity to have a little chat with you this evening. I've got one question I would like to ask all of the commissioners individually. And I would appreciate a yes or no answer. Can we do that?
No, ma'am, this is, we're prepared to receive comments from the public.
Okay. My comment is, would you like to have a boat ramp as proposed at Honey Creek, one hundred and thirty-seven feet from your back door? I ask you to think long and hard on that. Additionally, can I pass out?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we're saying that's not maintaining everything.
Thank you.
I'll say to my, my next girl.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sure.
Uh, my people. Uh, Paul's. Bridgeport, the five. June 10. Paul, thank you for the conversation. I have children.
Thank you.
My question to you is, I know exactly how it has Bridgeport progress that you've seen this past.
My question to you is, if they're going to use this as an amenity, tout it as an amenity for that subdivision, why don't they, or why don't you route traffic through that subdivision, which would be much safer route back through and up to Georgia Episcopal Conference Center Road? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that's registered.
Anybody from the public wish to speak for the board?
Good evening.
State your name and address.
Uh, Flip Drager. I live here in Woodbine. What we have here, and what we've had for some time, is clearly a failure to communicate, right? So by show of hands, I'd just like to ask y'all a simple question on the board. Who believes in representative government? Does, do any of y'all believe in representative government? I recognize Mr. Goodman is having raised his hand. Mr. Turner did not raise his hand. Mr. Casey did not raise his hand. Mr. Reddick, did you raise your hand? I don't think you raised his hand. Mr. Bryant, Brant did not raise his hand. We don't have the courage to admit what our job is supposed to be. Why are you on this board? This nonsense about needing two people to get something on the agenda is clearly an attempt to try to silence one member that brings up good issues, wants discussion, and you're trying to shut him down. At best, it's indecent, poor judgment. At worst, it's tyrannical. It's nonsense. Y'all can't even raise your hands, except for one gentleman, Mr. Goodman, to say you believe in representative government. Yet you come up here, we pray, you say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, not the dictatorship. That man right there, all these men, you represent your constituents, shutting any, and any one of each other down is shutting down a large portion of this county, and that's not acceptable. Y'all can sit up there and, and axmarmy about it and cut people off and not let Mr. Winkle talk. These people have come out here and spent their evening to come here to talk about important issues. I just know, I know, it's gonna be red, so you can tell me to leave. So just, I'm ready for it, okay? And I'll leave. But my point's been made. Tyranny's got to stop. We see it at the top in Washington, and we see, now we're seeing it locally. I wanted to stand in the back because I sit all day at a computer. And, and the lady said, you're gonna have to sit down. I said, ma'am, am I required to? Yes. Why? So the commissioners, you might distract them. Well, if you're distractible by just a regular guy standing in the back of the room, maybe you need to find something else to do.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for the board?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Brian Corey. I'm an attorney practicing out of Glane County, and I also serve as the City of Woodbine City Attorney. I know that they have an item on, or there is an item on the agenda tonight, number three under Old Business, related to Satilla River Walk Park, and I didn't know if we'd be allowed to provide comments during the discussion of that agenda item, or if I need to make those now.
We gotta make them now. We got three rounds.
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I, I have attempted to reach out to Mr. Myers as the county attorney. We were unable to connect before tonight. He did call me back, but I was able to provide a letter to him before the meeting tonight, just providing some perspective from the City of Woodbine and some clarity on the issues related to the repairs at Pavilion Park. Based on what I've heard and what I've understood now, I do believe that this is probably a moot point in the sense that I've been made aware that the PSA has agreed to make those repairs at Pavilion Park. Uh, but we did want to be present tonight so that we could provide any clarification if any questions arose during that agenda item. I'm joined tonight by the city administrator, Ms. Samantha Young, Mayor Knight, and, uh, city council member Rick Baird. Um, and we just wanted to make ourselves available in case there's any, any necessary clarification that we needed to provide during that agenda item. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, I have provided a letter to county attorney, Mr. Myers. I would assume he'll probably share it with the commission, the county administrator, but appreciate your, your time tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on. All right, this time we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We're now in a public hearing. All right, you're up, Joey.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I'm here to ask for approval of the two thousand twenty-four capital improvement element draft of the comprehensive plan for Camden County. Now, this report is required to be updated annually in order to be considered a qualified local government for any grant applications that we apply for. Now, this draft does consist of a short-term work program and an impact fee financial report. So staff would recommend approval on this.
Do I got any questions for Joey? Does anybody from the public wish to comment on the twenty twenty-four capital improvement element draft? Seeing none, we'll move on. Need a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene to regular meeting?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Got a first and second to adjourn the public hearing, reconvene to regular meeting. All in favor? Motion carried. All right, it brings us to item number one. See, the intergovernmental governmental agreement between Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the construction of the Honey Creek Boat Ramp.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, this, this item before you this evening, uh, we had this back, I believe, in October. Uh, but this is for the Honey Creek Boat Ramp, as we've had a few, uh, public comments on this already. Uh, but this is an intergovernmental agreement between the county and Georgia DNR. Uh, this is to allow for the construction, um, as well as the funding for the boat ramp at Honey Creek. Uh, so this is something that, uh, we've been working with, with, uh, Georgia DNR as well as the Episcopal Church, I believe, on at least over three years now. Um, and this is before you again for your consideration, uh, for this evening. Uh, Mr. Paul Matters from, uh, Georgia DNR is here again, in the event that there's any question that better uh, held by the board. So with that, uh, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
There are first and second. To approve the intergovernmental agreement with DNR. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes three and two. Bring it to item number two.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the real estate purchase agreement, uh, between the county and the Episcopal Church. Uh, this, uh, the purchase price is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Fifty thousand of that is the option price. Uh, the option price is put in place. Uh, it will be deposited into the church's account if approved. Um, if, and, uh, this is a two-year agreement, so if in the event that, uh, Georgia DNR is unable to secure the required permits, uh, for the boat ramp, uh, that fifty thousand dollar option price will be, uh, given back to the county. Uh, and then the, the total purchase cost of the one twenty-five is coming up, impact fees. Um, there's, there was some conversation that we had with some of the adjoining property owners. Um, the, uh, intersection there at the Episcopal Church Road as well as Dover Bluff Road, I believe is something we're gonna even need to consider just in LMIG in the future, not only this year, maybe even next year. Uh, just because that intersection is not a true ninety. Now, we've had some conversations on, on that, as well as, uh, taking care of some roadway issues to where pedestrians either coming, uh, from the Episcopal Church Road or on Dover Bluff Road, depending which way you're going. Uh, that way we can open up that curve a little bit more, just clearing some more additional roadway um, and making sure we've got the appropriate signage, as well as any type of emergency flasher devices uh, we've put in place, uh, throughout the county and other areas. So uh, with that, I'll turn it over to you if there's any other questions.
Let me get a motion on this item.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Got a first and second to approve the purchase agreement? All in favor?
I mean, discussion.
Yeah, we can, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a counter motion that impairs this pending the formalization of the issues brought forth by the citizens who spoke of this issue tonight, as well as a number who took the trouble to write in. It seems to me that there are a couple of things at play here. One, one is we really haven't done all of the work that needs to be done to make sure that this is done, if it's done at all, that it's done appropriately, and that all issues and concerns are addressed. And the other thing is, I have a real concern with the price we're paying for this. I think that it's time to pull back from it and renegotiate it. Um, it can wait. There's not such a thing as emergency fishing until we solve these problems. And that, that I would like to make in the form of a counter motion.
Okay. Anybody want a second? Mr. Goodman, the motion? Seeing none, that, that fails. We'll go back to the first motion. We had a first and a second. All in favor? Those opposed? All right, it brings us to item number three.
Good evening, Commissioner Seth Collins, Deputy County Administrator. Uh, item number three of Old Business is the contract award for the park pavilion metal roof, metal roof replacement at Satilla Waterfront Park located in Woodbine. Uh, first, I want to thank the City of Woodbine team for being here tonight. We appreciate you coming, and as their attorney, uh, stated earlier, that, uh, the PSA has agreed to make the repairs uh, at those pavilions. And with that in mind, it is, um, my, uh, and staff's suggestion for no action on this, uh, agenda item at this time.
Right, thanks, Seth.
Thank you.
But, um, but you mentioned PSA. I'll bring up one item about the PSA. Um, I've been emailing the special prosecutor, and the only reply I got back from her was that the investigation is still ongoing, which is a good thing. And, uh, I told her that the citizens of, of Camden County want and need some type of justice coming from the PSA investigation. Moving on to item number four.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I did bring four books. Uh, Commissioner Goodman, I did not have a spare one for you, but I will, I've got more getting printed.
What am I missing out on?
Uh, the pavement assessment index, but you, in my defense, you only have one road. Hubbard Road is your only road in your district that's fun and important. Perfect. Um, so we will talk a little bit about that. That is what's on the screen as well, is just kind of an overview. In two thousand twenty-three, we completed the, um, full pavement assessment index that we did in two thousand nineteen as well. So this was a, uh, one that we've done since we've done the four years of different pavement preservations, resurfacing. Um, of course, Horse Stamped Church Road was redone. So the agenda this evening is about the LMIG grant, the local maintenance improvement. We submit it every year by February first. It's due. And that is for us to bring a list of roads that we intend to put out for an RFP and get quotes on to resurface. So what we're talking about tonight, the expenses, uh, the LMIG GDOT portion is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and ten cents. We have a thirty percent, um, match requirement that we put towards that. Uh, we, I'm asking for extra SPOSS dollars to put towards that. We have been working, trying to get eight to nine miles resurfaced and preserved every year instead of the four that we were working on as we were trying to get a little bit more caught up, and I'll talk about that when we go through the road list. So the, uh, total expenditures would be one point four million, um, five hundred, basically, that we would use this year. Um, so there's a little bit more. We do have the fundings in SPOSS for the roads set aside. That's still there. Um, so the approval is to, uh, just to allow me to submit our application and submit our ideal roads list. That doesn't mean that some of these, you know, when we go through the RFP process, depending on what the prices are this year, that we may have to make some decisions and potentially cut roads as we have in the past. Uh, we do have some roads that are gonna require deep surface patching, which happened last year as well, that there was some construction reconstructed that had to be done besides just resurfacing. Um, so the pavement assessment was complete. We've identified an order, um, to try to give a, basically, a five-year plan. Again, we need to stick with the eight to nine miles a year to really complete what we started a few years ago and get to the point where we can start preserving the roads at a, a much lower cost. So once we get them, all, all of the pavement preservation, once we stop all of the damage, we'll get to a point where we're, we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars a mile to resurface one of those roads and continue to keep them good every seven to ten years instead of waiting or pushing. So that, that's the plan. If we go into, um, the yellow areas on this map, of course, are lower. The green is good, yellow is bad, orange gets real bad, and red is failed. Um, so you can't see it real well on this map. When you scroll in, you start seeing areas that the orange becomes a little bit more obvious and, and the yellows. If anybody can, can see some of those. And that's all the Excel list in this book. So the booklets that you have will show it a little bit more in detail, down to the level of every single pothole in the roads. Um, Refuge Road, of course, is one of our main roads that will have to be done Dover Bluff, you know, over the next five years. But there are a significant amount that are still on the list. We've, we've made a lot of headway over the last several years. Um, if you can go to the Excel sheet, please. Or it might have been just from the agenda. The, um, is there another page for the agenda? And it, I mean, I'm sure they, let's miss, probably, I don't know.
Yeah, that.
Do you have, okay. So that first page, this lists what that has, and it's got nine point eleven miles for two thousand twenty-five. That's certainly our goal. There are thirty roads listed there. Some of them, you know, what we're gonna find, like the ones that are highlighted in blue, the reason I highlighted those is because it's the Terre Haute subdivision. We're not gonna go in and only do four roads in that subdivision, knowing that two or three of the roads is going to need it in two or three years. So we would go in and do the entire subdivision. So while you may have a couple of roads that aren't all at a sixty-eight or seventy-one percent, um, so that also may change this list that could, when we put it together for the RFP. But these are the goals. Um, then getting into year two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, I basically broke out the roads. This is just strictly based on their condition index. And, um, like Refuge Road, obviously, you know, the whole road's not bad, but there are a couple miles in there that, you know, we may have to make that decision that we just do those two miles at some point in two thousand twenty-six and, and wait and not do all seven miles at one time. Um, so some of our longer routes, Vacuna Road is another one on page two. So there are several roads throughout the county that are six to eight miles that if, you know, if we do the whole road, that's it. That's all you're getting for that year. Um, but we'll continue to obviously analyze these and ideally, um, get through that. On, does anyone have any questions about the pavement index or these? And if not, um, we can, I can go through it another time. But one of the pages, the, the condition summary I just put in. But one of the pages, the the condition summary, I just put in a picture that kind of shows where it was in 2019 compared to where we are in 2023. We've certainly made quite a bit of improvements. I think it should be after this. It's, yeah, thank you. So that kind of compares where where all of our inventory was in 2019. As you can see, we've made considerable strides in the areas of critical and lost as well as fair. We've reduced all of those areas. And ideally, if we could keep the pavement above an 80 for the condition index, that's really where you're starting to maintain your roads way more cost effective than it is once it gets too bad. We currently have seven miles total that is in that critical and loss that's going to require some patching, which we did have, I think, 21 miles. So we've made a considerable impact on that. And those miles will be corrected this year. Then we've got 24 more miles that are in fair that we'll focus on over the next two years, and then you're getting into good. Does anybody have any questions about those two photos? So this evening, and then the the other map that I gave you copies of is the striping index. So this year, that was the first year we've done that. We actually had the striping completely analyzed and looked at. We do have several areas that we've identified. We can't necessarily wait to only resurface the road to stripe. Some of the roads, we've completely lost the fog lines on. And part of the safety LMEG money that GDOT gave to us last year, we can use those funds to restripe these roads. So even some roads that may not be resurfaced for two to three, four years, we will still be able to go in and do restriping to make sure we can see those for safety reasons. So that will also be put in an RFP. So my request tonight is just the approval to submit the local maintenance grant. Let GDOT know these are the roads we intend to submit RFPs on and hope to get resurfaced this year.
All right, if I got any questions for Shalina.
Hang on, Mr. Chairman.
You did say that we can do some stripings. You and I talked about that.
Yes, that's this. This map with the blue and red and yellow will be part of the safety LMEG money, which will be separate. Ideally, if if there's areas, you know, if we're in the Kingsland Terre Haute subdivision or we're in the Harriet Split subdivision, then we'll tack those roads on at that same time. Just the contractor would give us better ratings and not have to mobilize a second time. But if it's if it's not in the area, then it's just not. I mean, there's some Oscar Road up on the north end. We've got some areas in the north end that it's just gone and needs to be done.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Shalina.
Thank you.
I think you needed a formal.
We need a motion on this going.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve this for this grant. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you, Shalina.
All right. James, you're up. This is item number five.
All right. Thanks, y'all. So when we did the agreement with Plug Power back in 2021, that MOU contemplated that at some point, they had the ability to assign the rights and responsibilities of that agreement to a wholly owned subsidiary of Plug Power. Now that they are fully commissioned by the Department of Energy, and I think some of you probably saw on social media today, they are now actively producing green liquid hydrogen. It's time for them to do that. So that's all this is, is them assigning the rights and responsibilities associated with their agreement with us, the development authority in the county, to Peachtree Renewables LLC, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Plug Power. The only thing I'll clarify there that I think we all need to be aware of is Plug Power is still responsible for all the the taxes that they were obligated to pay, for the jobs that they are obligated to create, for the investment they're required to make in Camden County. So none of that changes, but they they changed the name of the company to have a specific company just for this Georgia operation, appropriately enough, Peachtree Renewables.
Can you remind us how much they've invested in this community?
84 million was the initial investment requirement. Of course, that was in 2021 before everything rose dramatically. My conversations with them are well over 90 million now is what they estimate.
And they also mentioned about doubling the size of it at one time.
Yeah, that's right. So they they started off with an operation they called Pathfinder, and that was producing hydrogen. The one that you saw on social media today that has gone live, that's their Peachtree operation, and that is now the largest producer of green hydrogen, green liquid hydrogen in the country. And they still have plans to expand beyond that. I'm not really sure where else they're going to go because they're kind of landlocked in their spot there. But we'll help them if we can.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
All right, can I get a motion on the side?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a first and a second to approve the MOU?
Yep.
All in favor? Those opposed? All right, this brings us to item number six, the renewal of the annual fiscal agent designation agreement for the Georgia Family Connection Partnership. Are you handling that?
Yes, sir, I can. So last year, we were asked from the Family Connection Partnership, the Camden County Family Connection, if we would be willing to serve as a fiscal agent. Most, you know, several counties serve as fiscal agents for these organizations. Each county has a family connection in their county. So this would just be allowing the county to serve as a fiscal agent for fiscal year 25.
All right, can I get a motion on the side?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a first and a second to approve renewal of the annual fiscal agent designation? All in favor? Motion carried. Bring this to item number seven. All right, this is. This is on consideration of amendment to the resolution establishing rules pertaining to the agenda setting process. Can we get a motion on this side?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We get a second? I'll second for discussion. All right, any discussion?
Yes, sir. I, of course, have some serious concerns about this. I know I've been told that it's not in reference to me, but I've also been told by people who are far smarter than anybody at this day that it is in reference to me, and that is a number of voters. And I'd like to pose an alternative motion to what's before us tonight. And if you'll bear with me, I'll enumerate some points about it. One is that I recommend that we do away with the three-minute restraint and that we simply allow citizens to come before us, to stand at that podium, and to state their concern and their case and to allow them to have a reasonable amount of time to do it as long as they are direct to the point, they avoid histrionics, and that they stay on task and genuinely try to let us know how they feel. And to which we would receive those comments with attention. Now, should they draw on, the chairman has everything at his disposal he needs. It's already there. You say, we get you. We understand you. You're being repetitive. Thank you for your comments. Sit down. Second part of it is that we have staff present when we know we have something that's been stated that there's going to be comments about, for instance, if it's a road problem, that we have the the Roads Department people here to to address that one-on-one with that person. And that the chairman assigns them to see that gentleman or that lady after the meeting, and they will attend to your problem. That way, we infranchise them. We let them know we're listening and we want to do something with them. Third thing is that we acknowledge them and clearly state what the next logical course of action is. Even it is, even if it is to say, you don't really have anything that we can work with. It's somebody else's problem. It belongs to a different jurisdiction. It's not ours. Thank you for coming and talking with us. Give them an answer. Give them some respect. That there be no restraint on any commissioner to bring any agenda item without any need for anyone else to agree to it. And that if somebody is acting in an untoward manner, that they can be dealt with personally. It's like, Jim, you're bringing some stupid stuff to us. And and I would, if I'm the victim of that or the cause of that, I'd listen to it. I'm a reasonable person. I don't need someone to agree with me when a citizen tells me they want something on the agenda. And they folks don't have to live in District Four. They can live anywhere in this county. I'm a representative of the people of the county. That the the fifth thing I would propose is that we engender and we foster every opportunity to be engaged and engaging with our constituents and our taxpayers and our supporters and the people who put us up here. And that, in brief and in summary, I think, will handle any problems that we've had because I really haven't seen, I've been here a year, I haven't missed a meeting as far as I know, and I haven't seen anybody get so far out of line that it requires the draconian method that we're going to consider here in a few minutes. People can be asked to leave, and they have been asked, and they have done so willingly. So I think we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And I I personally feel the sting of this. It's very, very disheartening to me, and I don't mind admitting it. It disturbs me greatly. I'm here for the people who put me here and nobody else. I don't have an axe to grind. Thank you for listening. I would ask for a second to my alternative motion, if anyone is brave enough to do that. Thank you.
Well, we already do about everything you said, except for, you know, we limited it to three minutes.
Thank you for the second. I appreciate it.
I did not second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was being optimistic.
I I will say, I've made a list of the pros and cons of this amendment to the agenda setting policy. And I don't think, you know, you know, you can look at it and say, okay, well, it will allow this or not allow that. And essentially, I mean, practically speaking, I think it accomplishes nothing but putting, you know, a more red tape on to our regulations.
Here, here.
You know, in one way, I don't feel like it would truly suppress any one commissioner's, you know, comments. I think it changes the method in which those get brought out. Maybe it doesn't get brought out in the agenda setting meeting, and it would have to be, if you look back at the very beginning, you know, we've got an adoption of the agenda, those items could be brought out there. So I really don't think it even accomplishes that. I just, you know, I just feel like it's more possibly unnecessary regulation. And I think, you know, kind of what we have adopted currently is what we've been doing for so long now, and it was just put in writing. So I feel like if any one commissioner has something they want to talk about, I'm here to listen and talk it out.
Well, before we put it in writing last year, several years ago, I tried to get something put before the board, and I couldn't do it unless I did it at that meeting. So, you know, I can, I can see your point, Ben. And we're not taking anybody's ability to add something to the agenda at a meeting. That's still there. And Mr. Goodman's done it. I've done it. This, to me, this is just a little bit of house cleaning and and hopefully to foster more than one of us just saying, hey, I want to do this. It allows us to hopefully have a conversation beforehand.
One of the things is on on page 271 of the Commissioner's handbook, it basically does deal with this. As a matter of fact, I do believe in representative government. However, when you when you go to the ACCG and you start taking these classes, they teach you how to run these meetings. One of the things that we're supposed to do is listen, period, in these meetings. We're not supposed to respond. That's why I didn't raise my hand when you asked to raise your hand. I wanted to hear what you got to say. Now, also, in these meetings, you're supposed to address all questions and remarks to the chairman, no one else. Also, in these meetings, you're supposed to never be detrimental to another individual within the room. I've been a commissioner for one year's time, and I got to say that a lot of stuff that has happened in this last year has broke my heart. I've lived in this community since I was four years old and have never seen people that looked like they were going to fall on the floor, kicking and screaming because they didn't get their way. I've lived in this community where I've seen that we agree and disagree on certain subjects and items, and we move forward with disagreement instead of kind of thinking that someone is our enemy because they disagree with them. When two people are involved, there's more information to me between those two people. I like the idea of co-sponsoring. I told Jim not long ago that him and I agree on more than we disagree on. I don't agree with some of his tactics, you know, leaving to up here and going down there and trying to do those kinds of things, but that's him.
Did he agree with you?
No.
I've actually done that myself.
You have, but I would agree with that. We were elected to hold this position, not your position. That's your job to tell us what you want to do. So there's your representative government. So I I tell people all the time when they're mad at me or angry, and believe me, in the last year, I have been cussed out more than I've ever been cussed out in my entire life. But they have that right. They have the right to disagree. Every one of you guys has the right to disagree with us. But when we're looking at something, I think it's better that we have a co-sponsor because when two people look at the same project, they don't have to agree to bring it up here. You can disagree all the way on it, but we may need to discuss it, and that's what we do. We discuss it when we get in here. It doesn't matter if we agree or if we both disagree as long as our discussions help move our community forward. And it's, I got to tell you, it's it's really been a hard year as far as I'm concerned. It would help us, and we could move quicker. Also, we've had three and a half and four-hour meetings where I go home. I tried to resign several times because I thought, if these folks hate me this much, I don't want to represent them. But it's not true. It's not true because this community here is changed and grown over the years, and we work together. I remember when the Navy base was coming to Camden County, and everybody at the paper mill wanted, no, don't let them come here. They're going to mess with our fishing holes. We won't be able to get the oysters we used to get, and it's going to change our community. Thank God it changed our community because that mill closed. And without that Navy base right now, we would be to be Patterson, Georgia, or Bristol, one of those places. But we're different. We're changed. So I don't see a problem with it. I know Stephen Sains. You guys know him also. For him to get a bill across in the legislature, he needs a co-sponsor, someone else that's involved with it. I like it because it helps me to grow and it helps me to learn. So that's that's kind of where I'm at on it. But I also say this, that we need to also be involved in our community, not with just verbiage and not with just words. We need to be the people that go out when when we have problems in our community with our chainsaws and help these folks out. When the Miss Myers that lives in St. Mary's lost everything she did in a tornado, we need to be the people out there trying to fix up her house. Those are the kinds of things that I would like to see us do. I'd like to see our parks done well. I'd like to see our soccer complex repaired. And when the weather's below 32 degrees, I would like to see us as a group of people out in the woods dragging the homeless out and giving them a warm shelter so they can make it through this. And working with Chalena and people like that and the DNR to get their drainage corrected and stuff, that's that's what we do. I do. And and I'm sure the rest of us do. That's important that those things happen. It's very, to me, it's vital. So I, Jim and I were going to go to lunch. We didn't make it, did we? Remember when we were going to go to lunch?
I can't remember.
It was a couple of weeks ago.
I told you I was going to buy you lunch.
Oh, I remember. You were going to buy me lunch.
Let's get back on the subject.
Okay, I can't help it.
We can do lunch later.
Okay.
Well, let's do supper.
Thank you, Ben.
But the thing about it is, I think, if I think that if this happens, then this is a moot point. If we talk, if we communicate within the three, the five of us, we can't do three at a time, but we can do. If we do three, we've broken a sunshine law. We can't do that. But we can talk too. We can talk, and we can just share what's going on. So that, to me, is, I don't see anything wrong with this. I definitely don't think it's pointed at you. I know it seems that way to some people. I don't see that. So that's my opinion.
All right, anybody else got anything?
Yeah, I'd like to just.
Just two comments. One is, it's been alluded to that the federal and state legislature, Congress, whatever, has to have a co-sponsor bill. Ladies and gentlemen, we are not the state or the federal government.
Here, here.
We are Camden County, Georgia. We are neighbors. We are representing people on a face-to-face, personal, up-close, one-on-one basis, and we need to be directly responsible to them. So having a co-sponsor towards that process, to me.
Then why can't we talk? Then let's do talk.
Yeah, I agree. But, but I'm not going to be indicted for not going to lunch with you. I'm a busy man. I, you know, I have a job aside from this, and I'm sorry we couldn't get together. So, and now, Martin, I've forgotten the other point that I had to make, but I know it was a good point, I really do. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I've got to say about this is it opens a dialogue. When you get shell-talked with something, you don't know what's coming. You get it on the agenda, at least there'll be some open discussion about it prior to, so you understand what's coming up. That's, that's my point, supporting this.
Well, and, and that was kind of my point, I guess, and I don't know if I made it clear enough. I mean, if, if we have, if it's, if the access to getting something on the agenda is easier and there's less regulation to do that, then a commissioner can do so. We kind of know what's coming down the pipeline, we have time to do research. But if the commissioner feels roadblock, and we can't get that co-sponsor per se, but it's a, you know, vital issue, and then he brings it up in the agenda adoption section, and everybody's caught off guard, nobody's had time to do research, and it's not, it's not about, you know, being caught off guard, but I just, when I go into something, I like to do my homework and I like to know the facts. And so I think it just kind of gives you a little bit more opportunity to do that research when you know what's happening down the pipeline.
Or to our rules, for it to be added at, at a meeting, it's got to be something of an emergency nature. If it's not of an emergency nature, it's held over to the next meeting.
So then, that's never been enforced before, and now we're going to start enforcing that, so then, the thing-
We, we did that a while back, because you may, you tried to put something on the agenda, and it wasn't an emergency, and we held it over to the next meeting. So we have done that.
Okay. I, I do remember my other point, and that is, that the only times these meetings have ever run excessively long has been because of executive session, and it's not been because of people taking time at the desk. And so, as a person who's paid approximately $1,700 a month to do this job, I want to earn my pay. I don't care if I'm in here three or four hours. I can even come at 5:00. I'll, I'll just barely squeak off the bus route in time to get here, but I'll do that, because if we need to take the time to do that, if we need to, to take the time to respect our citizens and hear what they have to say, then we need to do it. We don't need to thwart them with a three-minute gag and, and add additional burdens to them to be able to be represented by their government. Thank you.
Well, you know, there's other means of communication than, than this. This is a comment period for them to talk to us, but if there's something pressing, you know, email goes a long way, a phone call goes a long way. I'm willing to meet with anybody, anytime, 24/7. Call me at midnight, I don't care.
P R 549.
My number's out there. All right, you had a motion, haven't gotten a second yet. Anybody want to second your motion?
Do you mind re- restate your motion, Mr. Goodman?
It, it was a very lengthy thing. Essentially, I put all of the items that I enumerated in terms of opening the dialogue, doing away with the three-minute time and the light show, and just allowing people to have more of an interactive and respectful experience with presenting a case, assigning staff, if it's doable at that time, and being rather businesslike about it and saying, you've had enough time, we understand your problem, please, thank you, and please sit down. All of those elements, including the one about infranchising every opportunity for people to, to be able to bring an agenda item, I wanted those instead of this other amendment. I got them written down here, and I'm going to take time to read all of them.
Like I said, we pretty much do that, except for, you know, I limit it to, to three minutes, and that's the chairman's prerogative. Now, if y'all want to change it to, to five minutes, that's just a simple flip of the switch.
I'd like to flip that.
Not, not a problem, but, you know, that's-
I'll second your motion.
Thank you, Trevor.
All right, you got a first and a second? You want to repeat that motion again?
I'll read, I'll read the whole thing.
One more time.
Okay. The alternate, alternate motion was to do away with the three-minute restraint and the light show and allow a citizen to have a reasonable amount of time to state a case as long as they are direct to the point, avoid histrionics, and stick to the subject. That we have staff assigned to address any worthy issues that night, if possible. That we acknowledge them and clearly state the next course of action, even if it's to say, this is not something we can do anything with, you don't really have a case with us. Give them an answer, give them that respect. That there be no restraint on any commissioner to bring issues from his district constituents or anybody else in the county whatsoever, regardless of where they might live. That we foster and engender every opportunity to be engaged and engaging with all citizens at all times. And that's essentially it, Trevor.
Mr. Chairman, you have a main motion on the floor, which is the adoption of the amendment to the policy. And Mr. Goodman, I guess, is proposing this as an amendment to that motion?
Intervening motion?
Intervening motion or-
Not an intervening motion. This is a, this is a separate motion or amendment to the original motion.
Yeah, it is separate, sir.
It would be out of order to take it up, then.
Can you repeat that?
It would be out of order to take it up if it's another motion. You have a pending motion, if this is offered as an amendment to that motion.
All right, this offer is an amendment.
You got a first and a second?
A little further discussion.
Sure.
I just wanted to make a point, some, you know, a key point of this is discretion. The chairman has discretion to, to make that judgment call, and if somebody's beating the dead horse, he can cut them off. Because there's been times when, when that light, you know, has, has turned red, and I was hoping that you would, you know, the chairman at that time wouldn't cut them off, because what they were seeing was very important, very critical. And yet, there's been times when the light couldn't turn red fast enough because, you know, they were beating a dead horse. So I think discretion is, is a powerful thing in our meeting.
And I've done that, and then I get blasted for allowing this guy to go over and cutting this guy off. So if you're going to have a time limit, you got to stick to the time limit, and that's it. So, yeah, damned if you do, damned if you don't.
Is this, is this still, all right, if, if one person brings something to the, to the table, they have to still do it a week in advance? Is that, is that still there?
Yeah.
And the original motion would require somebody to support that, another commission to support that.
No, 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 that's not what, that's what is on here, but that's not what he's got-
That's not what he's planning to do, no, but that's the original motion, that's what it was.
Yeah. Well, right now, we got his motion on the table, we can vote on it, and we'll go from there.
That would be your motion, your original motion as amended.
I, I still don't understand it. So we're getting totally away from any kind of co-sponsorship? Is that what we're doing?
That's what he, he's proposing.
Is there a way that you could put in? I think it's, I, I don't like it in, at 4:30 on Friday afternoon. I get an agenda, and I've got to know it by Tuesday night, and it's 180 pages. I would rather have some way that, that we could let the rest of the, the board at least understand what you're trying to get done, you know, before Friday afternoon or 4:30.
Well, that's, the problem with that is, is when an agenda item gets turned in right at the deadline, then you don't have time-
That deadline being 11 Wednesday.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Is that a week? That's not a week. It's two days, right?
No. It's, it's the Wednesday prior to a Tuesday meeting.
But the agenda is set Wednesday afternoon.
Tomorrow, if you, well, next, next, tomorrow week.
Yeah, tomorrow week.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for clarification, so I understand Commissioner Goodman's amendment to the motion, but just for clarification, so, you know, for us, and so I know what y'all are actually trying to achieve here. Are we not doing anything with his amendment to the, the motion? There's no change to the, I guess, the current rule as it stands, other than the comments or the, the motions that he's applying? I'm just trying to confirm that. And I'm not talking about the amendment, I'm talking about the original, I mean, are you leaving that alone? There's no, no amendments, just what you're commenting here tonight?
Well, I think it has to, it has to be an amendment to that, or agenda item in order to pass muster tonight, according to the attorney. So we're amending what was put forth.
But basically what you're saying, you're, you're amending this, but basically what you're saying is you want the status quo.
Yes.
Other than the three-minute rule, but the three-minute rule, it's at my discretion.
And you said you could change it to five. I'd like for you to do that.
I'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
All right, we got a first and a second? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, before you take the vote, that would be in favor of the amended motion.
Okay. So we're not changing time? Exactly what are we doing?
Nothing.
Then we go back to the original motion, then.
No.
You have to go to the original.
All right.
Not the amended. If the amended one fails, or if it goes-
No, that's a play on words. We are changing the original motion. It's an amendment to that motion that says that we don't have to have two people to agree to an agenda item, and we're also letting the chairman decide about a five-minute time limit on that.
Clear as mud?
No.
Because it is muddy water. It's confusing to anybody.
This is very unclear at this point.
Yeah. Call for the vote and see where it goes.
You know, one of the things I'm trying to avoid here is a lawsuit for the county, another expensive lawsuit. That, I'm really trying to avoid that.
Well, under home rule, the board can set whatever policy we want.
And it can be tested.
So the motion on the floor is Commissioner Goodman's amended motion that he made. The motion on the floor is Commissioner Goodman's amended motion that he made, is that correct?
Yes.
And the only change is the five minutes?
Well, that's that discretion of the, of the chairman. That's the way it is written.
Okay, but you, but, but point number four that I made was that there be no restraint on any commissioner to bring issues from his district constituents whatsoever, wherever they might live. And that means I don't have to have, or a commissioner doesn't have to have a co-sponsor. We need to get away from that. That's the critical issue.
Well, that's basically the status quo that we've got now.
Okay, so we're not going to amend it according to what was originally brought tonight to change that. So we're not going to adopt something that says we have to have co-sponsor. That's my understanding of what you're saying. That I, going forward, I don't have to have someone-
Well, we, we haven't voted on anything yet.
Okay, that's what we need to go to.
You know, we either change it, or we stay status quo, is what I'm gathering from your motion.
Okay. I, I think that that's a correct assessment.
Okay.
You stayed in the status quo then.
All right, everybody clear on that? All right, we got a first and a second on the status quo? Basically, the status quo? All in favor? Those opposed? All right, well, we're going to stay the same. What'd you vote? I did.
Let's do lunch, Martin.
Can I join y'all?
Yes, you're mine. You need to talk to-
Commissioners, just, just before we move on, so I just want to confirm, status quo means no amendment to the current policy?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Joey, you're up.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'm asking approval of the 2024 capital improvement element draft of the comprehensive plan for Camden County. This draft does consist of a short-term work order program, a work program, and an impact fee, I mean, impact financial reports. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Can we get a second on this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion, first and second? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, good evening, Commissioner Seth Collins again, Deputy County Administrator in tonight for agenda item number nine. It's for the adoption of the Camden County 2024 legislative priorities list. I have spoken with each of you about this, engaged the board on creating this list, and what, the first four items on this list are from ACCG, and for those in the crowd who don't know what that is, it's the Association of the County Commissioners of Georgia. The first four, like I said, are their state priorities, and then the last three are local priorities. And so I'm going to read each of those priorities and give a brief description for them, for each of you. So the first one is mental health reform. We are supporting House Bill 520. This legislation empowers the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities to conduct studies of our mental health system, and this bill allows or allocates resources to local governments for jail diversion initiatives. Almost every county, including our county, signed a resolution of support for mental health reform in the state of Georgia. Next, from the state, is reimbursement of, for EMS services. We are supporting measures such as allowing the first 10 miles of ambulance transport to be eligible for Medicaid reimbursement, also increasing the EMS Medicaid rate and utilizing EMS license fees to enhance Medicaid reimbursement rates for ambulance services. The next one is property tax assessment and appeal reform. We support removing the tax estimate from the annual assessment notice because it can provide an inaccurate figure, which can lead to confusion to the Camden County taxpayers. The next one from the state is also soil amendments derived from industrial byproducts. So we are supporting legislation that facilitates information sharing between the Georgia Department of Agriculture and county governments for enforcement of soil amendments, as well as having oversight over the application of soil amendments within our county's boundaries. So to go to our local priorities, first one is for a general aviation airport development. We're supporting continued partnership with the state, GDOT, and FAA for constructing a replacement general aviation airport in Camden County. The next is hotel motel tax increase to 6%. We're supporting legislation that increases the hotel motel tax rate from 5% to 6% to align with the cities in the county. The increased revenue will support tourism initiatives and will, for the most part, be paid by non-residents of Camden County for the, I mean, most people coming and staying at our hotels are not our residents here, so that'll be pretty minimal on our residents. And lastly, it's for health department funding. We're requesting that the state financially support the construction of the new health department building and to fund the remaining $500,000 needed for completion of this critical and collaborative project in our county. So these will go to the Georgia General Assembly, and we'll send them to Representative Sains and Senator Hodges upon y'all's approval tonight. So I'm asking for the adoption of the 2024 county legislative priorities. Do y'all have any questions?
I got any questions there?
Motion to adopt the 2024 legislative priorities.
Say it.
We got a first and a second. All in favor?
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah. Do it.
I'm in favor of all of them except the airport replacement. We don't need an airport. We have an airport 30 minutes to the south of us, one 30 minutes to the north of us, and a couple of smaller ones to the north of us, in Warren, Ferdinand Beach. And it's been quoted that the industries that come here looking at us, first thing they ask is about an airport-
first thing they ask is about an airport. Well, no, it's not. It's about the fifth thing, and it's sort of like when I would get my dog to eat my homework, I had to sprinkle bacon grugy all over it to get it to eat it. So we force feed the idea of an airport maybe, and we get that response that, yeah, it'd be nice to have an airport. It's not a priority. It's a want, it's not a need. We can't spend that kind of money, we can't justify it, it won't pay for itself, it'll be a tax burden on us. It's, it's face court addition to, no airport. The rest of it, I'm totally in favor of, but no airport. We don't need it, thank you.
All right, Mr. Goodman?
I was just going to say to spend five, you know, five million dollars to get a sixty, seventy million dollar airport is, is a no-brainer when the federal-
It is a no-brainer, except for the ongoing costs of it.
They even maintain it. There's federal programs out there to maintain an airport.
Also, there's no such thing as free money.
Also, did you go to the, um, animation studio the other day? We got to be invited?
No, I did not.
Okay, there's, there's tax money for the state of Georgia where they can, um, you know, where they're making movies, and we're trying to bring that industry in here. When we bring it in here, in order for them to have, uh, the, um, get the tax break, they, we need an airport. They had to fly into the area where that is.
In Jacksonville and Brunswick are not the areas?
Jacksonville is not, now Brunswick-
It's got to be in Georgia.
It's got to be in Georgia.
And then Brunswick's right there.
Yeah.
Saint Thomas, as well as the Brunswick.
Well, we got a first and a second, all in favor? Those opposed?
Thank y'all.
Brings us to the fourth calendar. Okay, not hearing, you want to do that?
There are no changes right now.
Okay. All right, county administrator comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have one. Just a, a big thank you to, uh, the Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, and several of our, uh, church and nonprofit organizations that really assisted the county over the last week, uh, whenever we were dealing with all of the, the cold, uh, the severe cold that we were dealing with. So we had a few, uh, people take, um, advantage of the shelters that we put in place. Uh, I think we had one that had to stay in the sheriff's office, um, the separate holding facility that they have there, uh, just so they're, you know, out of the elements, making sure that they're being taken care of, and they're not suffering from any type of hypothermia, um, what have you. But it was just a, it was a wonderful opportunity for a lot of organizations to come together, and we're very thankful for, um, all of those organizations, um, including the sheriff's office. Uh, he really stepped up and helped us out during that time. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, he brings us to our last public comment section. Everybody registered? All right, seeing none, uh, anybody from the public wish to speak?
I'd like to say something, Mr. Commissioner. Earlier, you said, when we were talking about the agenda, you had said that when we were debating having, uh, two people, two commissioners have to, to, uh, agree on it, to get it on the thing, and you said, well, they can enter it during the meeting, put it on the agenda? The problem with that is, it's not publicized. The agenda's publicized, so I can, I can look, and I can see what's, what's going to be done up here. But if you didn't, didn't publicize it like that and added it at the, at the meeting, I wouldn't know about it. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, that's why we limit that to emergency items only, and, and if we postpone those to the next meeting, unless it's an emergency. Anybody else wish to speak?
To the commissioners and friends, as well as to my enemies. My name is Janice Casey, and I'm a lifelong citizen of Camden County. My husband and I reside at thirty-four twenty-two Burntfort Road, White Oak, in the Tarboro community, where we have raised five children to adulthood and now have twelve grandchildren who we are looking to educate and inspire with the beauty of God's creation. We have reached, but we have reached an impasse. For nearly a year now, the water on the back west corner of our property has been seeping upwards and then standing still. Little by little, it is inching upward towards our animals and backyard. The acreage that we used to be able to cut is too muddy, and, um, as a result of the standing water of the last eight months, several small trees have fallen, weeds have grown up, and to what amounts to a swamp. Two garden patches we used to plant vegetables in are no longer accessible for that. Due to the days of excessive rain, the water is now in our backyard and has reached our animals. And we have had at least two animals to drown. To date, we have reached out to our commissioner, Lanny Brandt, who said he was looking into the problem at my request, Jessica Warren. The county extension agent came out to take a look and suggested I talk to Cassie Turpin, the floodplain and soil erosion inspector. She took a look and said she would investigate the permits by the timber company cutting nearby to see if they were operating properly, and if anything they were doing was making the problem worse. I've not heard anything further from her. She did suggest that I talk to Robert Strickland of Public Works. He came out and showed us where the backup of the water occurs, suggested that beaver dams are really the problem. He was willing to help, but it would not be a long-term solution, because Highway two fifty-two is a state road and somewhat out of his jurisdiction. He suggested we talk to Norman Smith of the DOT. He came out, looked at the problem. He said the beaver dams, too, were a major source of problem, but he couldn't really help. So he suggested that I come back to the commissioners. So as a long-term, tax-paying citizen and contributing member of the community, I have some suggestions. Number one, the county solicit, solicit someone who has the duty of tearing down beaver dams on and near the two fifty-two area where the problem lies with the trapping or killing of beavers on a regular, ongoing basis. Number two, that the county DOT and involved citizens like myself come together and meet with a solution to get rid of the standing water and make sure proper drainage is, is in place. And number three, that we look at possible mapping out of an alternative route.
We'll get with you after the meeting, and, um, it's busy, we-
Tonight?
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, good afternoon, my name is Brittany Sullivan. I reside at eleven oh five Broadwell Avenue in Woodbine, Georgia. Uh, I'm here to address the possibility of erecting a plantation belt monument at Bryan Lang Library. Um, as a citizen of this county and the city of Woodbine, I cannot in good conscience stand by without saying something. I do not believe there is enough historical value to have this bell on display, and I believe that the perception that comes along with this bell does not represent all the citizens of Camden County. I do not believe we should be erecting monuments in this county that bring those memories of darker times to our community, but we should look into erecting monuments that reflect the diversity and family values of both Woodbine and Camden County. Um, I appreciate the sentiment that the family who owns the bell may have. However, it is not the sentiment shared with a lot of the community members here in Woodbine and all of Camden County, um, and I think we should definitely take that into account.
Thank you very much. You, you said you were against it, is that what you said?
I have-
Okay.
Anybody else wish to speak? Come on up, Rick.
Rick Mann from Bullhead. Mr. Chairman, I just want to address the, uh, problem I've been having with the, uh, the email I sent to the, uh, planning director. Uh, it come to my attention that, uh, as I requested through Section eight oh five for, uh, Mega Straight to ad- address, uh, Section eight, ten of the ordinance and codes, uh, that there has been designated to other personnel to be addressing that. I still, it's seven weeks now, and I still have not received a reply. Uh, to my knowledge, it is now not the director's, uh, problem, it's, uh, somebody else's. It's, so whoever it is, I'd like to, uh, the board administrator, somebody to find out who's in charge of enforcing these codes, and give me a reply of what they're going to do. And another thing, I've got a Freedom of Information Act I've had in for two more weeks, it'll be a year now. Still has not been responded to, besides the generic response that is not sufficient. Voting records of this board are public records. Don't matter what you voted on, that's what I requested. Just because it was, uh, you, you voted on approving litigation or whatever, it don't matter. You still voted on it. That has nothing to do with the litigation. Your records are public, I expect them. You're failing, somebody's failing to respond to these Gore requests. That is not aga-, you know, it's against the law. Let's respond to them, because this is not a legitimate excuse. I will take that further, too, it's been a year. Now, I'm, I'm rocking on two months with this other, uh, you know, we need to start holding people accountable, by first, holding yourselves accountable. I hold myself accountable for what I do. I expect the same out of my voted-in representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else wish to speak for the board? Go on once, go on twice? Re- pushing to adjourn.
Submissed.
Second.
Third.
Quit.
Third.
We got a first and a second? Can I adjourn, all in favor? We are done.